Welcome everybody to our work session this afternoon. And I appreciate everybody coming early so we could get the work session in. I think there's a lot of important items on the agenda for this afternoon. And I was out of town last week, and I appreciate us rescheduling this so that we could get it in. And I really wanted to be here for the discussion on the budget and calendar and all the important items that are going to be discussed today. This time, it looks like we got Ms. Gardner on first, so we'll have to go ahead and get started.
Chairman Francis and members of the board, Ms. Francis and Mr. Buchanan will be presenting their budgets respectively, and then I will follow with the local current expense.
You're up.
Do we stand? Do we sit? What do we, are we just passing this over?
Okay, we have an increase in our budget by $5,492 for this coming school year. On the right, I have a column showing the differences between last year's budget and this year's budget. The increases in salaries are projected based on a 2% increase as a guesstimate from Angie for what the state may do. And there will be increases on, there's an increase for our membership dues and fees line by $100. Now that Melanie's here, we've got a few more membership dues. Social Security was increased, as well as retirement and medical insurance. And the rest of the columns have either gone down or stayed the same.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Allison about the budget? Think it's a, appreciate the hard work in getting it all put together. I know it takes a lot of time to do that.
Pardon me, I can't hear you.
There's a $50,000 grant that's additional. Is that an additional grant?
That is, that 50,000, those USDA grants are, is the reimbursement we receive from the federal government, and we're anticipating that going up by $50,000 based on the increase in reimbursement rates and the increase in, with our CEP schools, our numbers of free and reduced interest rates, not interest rates, reimbursement has increased this year.
It's actually, it's not really a grant, it's the reimbursement.
Yeah, that's just what we call it.
Because that's the way they're labeled from the government, I'd say. So Ms. Francis, are you, the sale of lunch full paid? So are you looking for that to go down by $18,000? I mean, are we expecting nobody to buy lunch?
No, there's a lot of changes in categories with the change of North Canton and Clyde and Central Haywood going to CEP schools. Those kids that were normally in the paid category have moved to the free category, so there's been a change there. Just a reminder for Mr. Burnett, if you're a CEP school, although, and Allison can address this much better than I can, but since you're new, a CEP school means every child can eat breakfast and lunch free. They don't have to fill out those free and reduced lunch. Yeah, and we've got three schools that participate in that right now. North Canton, Clyde, and Central Haywood High School qualify for that program.
Any other questions or comments on the child nutrition?
Are we going to have to go up again this year on lunch?
We will. I don't have my formula yet from the state to determine if that'll be five or 10 cents, but it will have to go up.
And I'm sure that's in here.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Guess next is capital outlay, Joe. Buchanan?
You should have a packet with a spreadsheet on it listed proposed expenditures for our capital budget of 1819. In column two, I've got the projects listed, whether it's HVAC, gym renovation, access control. Those top three are a little different than what our regular capital budget is, but I wanted to include them because they are in capital improvements. The first one, the HVAC, central heating and air for Bethel Middle School Gym, we have approval for that project from the school board and from the county commissioners. We're waiting on DPI's approval of that project to use lottery funds. The second one, the gym renovation, Central Haywood High, we have approval from the commissioners on that, and we're getting ready to put it out to bid, probably receive bids in March on that one, using local fund balance. And the third one there, the access control, this is a follow-up to the project we done at North Canton a little over a year ago to put access control on exterior doors. This one, we're going to implement it at Central Haywood High and the IT department with a cost of approximately $55,000 and use ADM funds for that. And then the following is the list of items that I'd like to have projects done in the next school year, and I've got those listed. I'll let you look over those if you've got any questions.
And just to clarify, the Buildings and Grounds Committee members are probably aware of this, but for everyone else, where we have local fund balance designated, that is not our local fund balance. The county has sales tax revenues that have come in over, the sales tax revenues have increased over the last couple of years, and our debt service has decreased, so they've got a few hundred thousand dollars sitting up there. And so when we're talking about fund balance, we're actually talking about, it is still designated for public schools, but it is at the county level. Just wanted to clarify that. And again, I know the Buildings and Grounds Committee members are aware of that.
Debt services are $28 million bond.
Yes, sir.
We're paying back.
2027.
One thing you'd mentioned, Joe, you said 75, I mean, 55 ADM balance on the Central Haywood. We're showing 75 on here.
The balance is 75. The projects is going to be about 55.
Any other questions on the capital outlay budget, proposed budget?
We buying an excavator?
I'm looking to replace the one that we have. It is over 20-year-old.
You're talking about like a track hoe?
Yes.
Is it just a small one, or a?
Medium sized.
Medium sized.
About a 12,000 pound machine.
All right, Ms. Angie, we'll go with the current budget.
Current expense budget. You have two versions of the budget in your packet, and each version has two sections. So I'm not sure if I'm presenting one budget, two budget, could be four budgets, depending on how you want to look at it. But we will cover the things. The first section in each budget is what our current budget is and just what we anticipate, and I'll review what we anticipate mandated salary and benefit increases to be for this year. And then the second section of each of the budgets, one is the HB 13 version and one is HB 90 version. And we'll, and we'll talk about those when we get down into that section. So I think on version one, section two begins on page 11, and on version two, section two begins on page 12. So we'll begin with the first 10 or 11, 12 pages. We used for budget assumptions this year, we used 3% salary increase. Our retirement rate and hospitalization rate, we started out with 18% and 6,100 for insurance. We got confirmation last week from DPI that that is, they're about 99% sure that is going to be 18.44% matching retirement and 6,104 for insurance. So I went back and recalculated on both of those. In the little green box, I noticed I did not change the hospitalization from 6,100 to 6,104, but I did use 6,104. The retirement rate is an increase of 1.31% over this year. We are currently paying 17.13% matching, and as you'll recall, we pay that for every dollar paid to our employees that receive benefits. And to receive benefits, you have to work six hours or more. Same thing for hospitalization rate. The annual cost for our employees receiving benefits at six hours or more is 6,104. That's up $235 from this year. The current rate this year is 5,869. On both of your budgets, in the far left-hand corner, you'll see the lines are numbered in blue. On line 392, you'll see that we are increasing just from projected salary and benefit increases, we are anticipating an increase of $423,807. And that breaks down to $131,541 represents the projected 3% salary increase on 146 locally budgeted positions. The increase in benefits, which includes FICA, retirement, and insurance, is $166,490. So our projected, or using our budget assumptions, we're anticipating an increase of $298,000 on salary and benefits, which is similar to last year. Our actual 1718 salary and benefits was around $195,000 when we got the actual $1,000 when we were sitting last fall. Another lines, 189 through 192, those lines collectively show an increase of $76,210. And this is to make way for, if you'll recall, when we closed Central Elementary School, that gave us the principal months of employment on the state side for two years. So we currently have 265 months of employment that we get from the state. Out of that, we pay 180 months for principals, that's 12 months for our 15 principals, leaving us with 85 months to pay for assistant principals. We have 12 assistant principals. We use state 005 months of employment. We have one budgeted locally, and we pay the remaining ones out of state 69. So next year, we will only have 73 months to pay those additional APs. And so this is just giving us a little bit, you know, if we have to wind up paying all 12 months out of the local budget, it's in the budget. We don't have our state planning allotments for next year yet. There may be a possibility that we could pick up two or three or four months out of our state 69, but, you know, at this point, we're planning on the possibility of absorbing those 12 months of employment. Any questions on that?
That was 77, too?
Okay. The next line that you'll see that we've increased, making up that 423,000, is line 265, and that's our transfer to charter schools. We're anticipating a transfer to charter increasing by 49,565. And the way we arrived at that number is, we currently have about 425 brick and mortar charter students. Our local charter will be rolling off their eighth grade. There's about 30 to 33 students there. I'm making an assumption that they could pick up a, they could max out their kindergarten allotment, which would be about, give us about 15 more students. So that, that 49,000 increase allows for 15 at our county appropriation of 2107, plus an increase of $42, or about $41, $42 of the other 425 students we're paying now. We currently pay out $2,116, and that is made up of our county appropriation, plus about $50 per child for fines and forfeitures. If you'll recall, they, we have to make sure they get their proportionate share. So next year, we're anticipating with fines and forfeitures and county appropriation that we'll pay 2,157 per student. Any questions on that?
Is there, has nothing to do with the budget, but is there superintendent they hired just recently planning on going on up through high school? I think that was the plan.
I think probably we will see that, based on what's been reported.
If that comes to fruition, we may, that may affect that number worse.
Yes, sir.
I look at it on a negative one.
You can see we're kind of settling down. Last year, we appropriated an additional 109,000 for transfers to charters. Now it's 49, so, you know, we're kind of starting to settle in to what those numbers look like.
Very good.
Okay, there are other changes in the first section that have a zero net effect. The first one is two additional painter positions in the maintenance department with projecting those, each of those positions to be paid 25,000 in the benefits. Lines 108 through 111, and these are broken out from the 22 maintenance positions already budgeted, so you can see them separately. But lines 108 through 111 total 75,253. And then there are several lines that we are decreasing to offset that cost. They are, and I'll go slowly if you want to write this down or look at them. Lines 84, 85, 92, line 125, and it was $2,500 of that line. That line is being decreased by 5,000, and we're going to use 2,500 to offset the cost of two painters. Line 127, line 131, line 137, and line 140, those offsets total 75,253. Additionally, you'll see on line 114, HVAC controls, there's a decrease there, an increase to line 115, water and sewer repair that nets to zero. Line 125, pest controls, we're decreasing by 5,000. 2,500 is being applied to the two painter positions, and the other 2,500 is going to line 126, increase in uniforms. Line 344, 341, technology supplies and materials, decreasing and increasing to line 338, cell phone reimbursements. Any questions on those zero net effect items?
Any questions on that?
On version one, your version one budget, on lines 393 and 394, this is if HB 13 stays as it, as is. We're making preparations to hire possibly 32 more teachers, so we've done that projection at 1.6 million dollars. If that is our budget, the total budget needs for 2018-19 is 19 million, 107, 710. Under those conditions, we will be appropriating a total of 2.2 million, 668,847 from fund balance. We are projecting an increase in county appropriation of 442,686. On the last page, you'll see a slight increase in fines and forfeitures. That's based on last year's actuals and how we're kind of pacing this year. Same thing for ABC revenue. But we're hoping for version two, so let's look at that.
They're supposed to vote on tomorrow, and I don't know whether the governor's going to sign it or not. There was some debate on whether he was going to veto.
Yeah, I think there were some things, other things in that. On version two, beginning on page 12, you will see, beginning on line 393, the principal and department requests that we discussed, I think at the January work session, and at the board's request, Dr. Garrett has ranked those in order of importance. You'll see those going down through there. Those total to 394,238. That budget needs would, that, this version would make our budget needs at 17 million, 902,381. All of the revenues remain the same, with the exception that obviously we would not be appropriating the same amount of fund balance. We would appropriate 1 million, 463,518. Are there any questions?
Now, we are not approving this tonight.
No, sir. The public hearing is, they have to have the public hearing, right, to approve it, and that's scheduled for March 12.
So the stuff from line 392 to 405, those are the requests, but for now, we're not going to decide whether to implement or take out, or?
Now, this was just for your information.
Tonight?
As you asked last time that we get to arrive.
Right.
And Mr. Clark, there was one that you questioned last time, and it was maybe just there.
It's what? I didn't hear.
I'm one of them, and you can see where it's placed.
I like that it was number nine, wasn't it, Ms. Clark?
Oh, the ballot, I see it. Okay. Yep. I'm a little behind. I couldn't get my modal yesterday, so.
Well, that's the reason we got some time. I mean, we got public comment coming up, and so we got some time to look at it. Ms. Angie, line 103.
My pocketbook ready, Mr. Buchanan?
I'll see you.
103, you saw that. 10.
Skilled trades.
Yes, those are the, our maintenance department positions. We have 22 budgeted, and that would just be the anticipated 3% increase in pay. That's why we broke those down, those two painter positions, we put them below there so that it didn't get kind of, so it's very distinctly separate.
That's the initial pay that we're expecting.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Have we ever implemented anything on this as far as, I know we've had discussion on it before, say a maintenance worker gets another certification in another trade, that he's, gets him more highly experienced in a certain division or trade, or?
Mr. Roger.
HVAC, you know?
We have, we have talked about that, and if you'll recall, and I know y'all approve a lot of things, and it's been a long time since last fall, but we do still have the salary study out there. We're hoping to get a draft version of that at the end of this week, possibly early next week, that gives us market comparisons, as well as other LEA comparisons. Hopefully, we'll.
I knew it was going to be worked on, I just say, a lot of things gone through this mind since then, so forget things.
I understand.
Thank you.
Is the coaching supplements, let's see, is that, that just carries from line 300, correct? I guess I'm looking up one. Which one do you want me to look at?
The one that should be the same.
I'm looking at number two.
Well, that's what I was, let me see if number.
Athletic coaching supplements are.
Let's see.
297 to 3.
Yeah, so that's just a regular.
That's just to allow a little bit of retirement increase. It's not the full increase on that full-dollar coaching supplement, because as you're aware, we have non-employee coaches that we would not be paying.
Correct.
Retirement.
I seen one more thing, just hold on. Trying to stick with this one. I look at this every year, and I guess sometimes you just catch things. The Pisgah baseball field, $12,000 rent.
That's the lease, that's the lease that we pay to Wells.
Okay.
Plus, we also have to pay the taxes. Taxes.
Taxes, okay.
The band uniforms, did we decide if there were going to be more? We talked about that.
We talked about that. That doesn't have to be a part of this. It'll need to be next year. I don't, I don't think he's going to be ready to order band uniforms this year, but in next year's, when we get ready to do our, the audit, the auditors come down, ask how much we want to set a sign for band uniforms. And so between, sometime between now and the fall, we'll need to, the board will need to decide if we're going to do 10,000 a year for eight years, or if you want to increase that to 12,000 or 15,000. And we might, Mr. Clark, it might be a good idea, once we see what this year's cost comes in at, to make a, I don't know if that would help us know what they're going to cost in eight years from now or not.
I know. Unless you just forget a percentage, I mean, from the last time.
Right.
It's on a guesstimator.
Yeah.
And I add 10%.
It'd be.
I would mention, there's a line, 266, you'll see that is in red, 800. For many, many years, we've used 048 for that program, safe and drugs-free schools, because that was a federal grant. But now the state is using 048 to pay bonuses to fourth through eighth grade teachers. So going into 1819, we're not going to use 048, because we don't want that to, if people just kind of pick up those local numbers, your local budget, if you're using the same numbers that the state uses, it should try to mirror. So we're changing that, but that's, no change in budgets, just a slight program change.
Did we ever separate? Did we ever separate that three thousand dollars that we're sending to the school board?
We did, yes, sir. Let me find that for you. Line twenty-nine and thirty.
One twenty-nine and one thirty?
No, sir, twenty-nine and thirty, first page.
Twenty-nine and thirty.
Twenty-nine is your membership in the NCSBA. And the next line, I'm down is the NEZBAC.
Okay, that's what that's like.
Any more questions on the budget? I'm sure if you find something you have a question on, I guess you call Ms. Gardner or Dr. Garrett, and I'm sure they'll have an answer for you. We can discuss it. Y'all want to move on to the calendar, or you want to... Ready to go? Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Garrett, who at Early College?
Okay, on March twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, if you all recall, we had a joint meeting with Haywood Community College at their site. It was, uh, their board members and our board members. And at that time, we discussed the Early College and the need to do some expansion, or the need to do something with that building up there because it was so obsolete. Uh, both boards indicated that there was a need. And then in October, the eleventh, Dr. Parker and others from the community college, and Mr. Francis, Joe Buchanan, Jeff Haney, Angie, Ira Dove, Kurt Kirkpatrick, Julie Davis, and I met. And we discussed the enrollment and the possibility of, uh, you know, how that would look if we extended the, the open enrollment. There was a need to expand. Uh, they have asked Haywood County Schools to place, uh, the building in our budget. And at this time, I met with them on January twenty-second, Dr. Parker, myself, and, and Mr. Kurt Patrick. And at that time, we were asked to submit a proposal in our budget for the new building. The estimate was three and a half million to five and a half million. Um, February the seventh, uh, Mr. Kurt Patrick actually toured the campus to kind of see what, you know, what the classrooms looked like and to see the, the size of them. There is a need for additional space there, but, but is that a line item that we want to include in our budget? We can't use lottery funds for it because, you know, it doesn't belong to us. And, you know, we definitely support continuing our partnership with the community college, with the Early College. But is that something that you want added to the budget is the question that we have been asked. Mr. Kurt Patrick said that, you know, we need to indicate in our budget. My indication would be that we fully support the community college and we fully support the Early College, but where would we possibly get the funds to pay for that?
I think at this time, from what I can gather, they're still not for sure what they're going to do up there. I mean...
No.
Three hundred building needs renovating, or do they build another building, or do they do this? I do agree with you, there is a great need. Our, our Early College building is, that's pretty, pretty tough facility to be into, but...
It's pretty tough when you have to walk through a room to get to another room, to get to another place.
Yeah, to get to another one.
You know, the conditions up there are very small because you've been in the facility. I certainly would think that we would maybe in our opening remarks, or even in our, uh, the letter to, supporting the budget, that we would put somewhere in there, in there, that Haywood Community, or Haywood County Schools wishes to support Haywood Community College in expanding or constructing a building for the Haywood Early College, but cannot, uh, place this in our budget at this time, something along those lines. Because, I mean, they're great partners with us. Uh, we would not have as many opportunities if we did not have the relationship.
I agree.
I think we'd be amiss if we didn't mention that in our budget statement.
Well, Mr. Kretschner said it was going to be brought up when we had the work session.
I think it'd be wise to put it in there, not line item, but...
Just some wording perhaps? Okay, why don't I draft that, and then I'll send it to, to you perhaps to look at so that we can work out the details? Would that be appropriate?
I think it probably needs to include something about additional local funding. Because we, even at, at three and a half million dollars, we don't, we don't have that.
No.
So it's going to have to come through some...
No, I mean, it would be make, basically a request for the...
We're asking for three and a half to five and a half million.
We wouldn't have it anywhere else. I mean, we're using our fund balance now just to float the system.
And see, I think the community college, you know, they're using their quarters and sales tax to do the three hundred building. And so that depletes what they would have too. And then they've got the same condition that we have. They can't do another bond for, for so many years and say, we can't do a bond until two thousand twenty-four. Plus, we couldn't do a bond on a facility that we don't own.
Right, that's right. Well, so the money's got to come from the county unless we have the ability to levy tax.
Yeah. No.
But I think we all agree we support the concept.
Put on there, tell Kurt to get his checkbook out.
I'll do that. That'll be in our opening remarks.
Okay, any questions about the statement that I just made?
I, I agree with, it needs to be in there. We've gone, I mean, we've met too much, and we see the need, and we know the need. And to not recognize that, I think we would be missing the opportunity. Even if it's a payout over several years even.
Yeah.
We don't have the money, I mean, it's obvious. All right. Miss Calendar. Don't say that word.
I just want to give you an update about where we are right now for this school year and, um, your names of the miss and, and moving forward, what we're looking at. So, um, just before we, I tell you a little bit, I just want to, these are just some things in the calendar of all that, um, are not necessarily on that first page that I showed you the last time, but, um, that it needs to include at least forty-two consecutive days when teacher attendance is not required. So that's the summer break, they got to have at least forty-two days. Schools cannot be held on Sundays. And each local school board, about the calendar, consists in of two hundred fifteen days, which are made up by ten annual leave, eleven holiday, oh, sorry. Thank you.
Eleven holiday, a thousand twenty-five hours of instruction, and then the remaining days to be teacher workdays. And then the closing date for students is no later than Friday, the Friday closest to June eleventh. This year, it is June fifteenth. That is not the Friday closest to June eleventh, but they gave us that waiver when we requested the waiver to start early. So they gave us the Friday following. So here's where we are right now. We've missed ten days of school. The last day for students right now is on June fourteenth. Is there, are there any questions about any of that?
It's mighty late.
It is. So in our weather makeup plan, what we have left are, we have June fifteenth, which would be called a no day, and it would extend the year till June fifteenth. We have Memorial Day, which is right now, and annual leave day, and then we go into spring break.
Or can we extend the day or have Saturday?
Okay, well, so that's where...
That's on a Saturday school person, because I just don't feel like there's much instruction.
So going forward, this is what we, we've kind of come up with and, and see what you guys think. We'll continue with our weather plan of extending it till June fifteenth and Memorial Day. If we miss on a Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, call Saturday school. If we miss on a Thursday or Friday, what we are going to ask is that you waive that day, call it an optional teacher workday, so teachers still work, but waive it for students, um, and waive up to a total of four days. That's just to get us through the weather month. Because we feel like we're probably going to have some more snow, and that's just to get us through. And then maybe once we review, once we get through the weather, the winter months, we look at the calendar again. And, you know, we obviously want to leave spring break to the very last thing that we have to take.
When do we set graduation dates?
I think they're set, yeah.
See, we can't go beyond the fifteenth.
Students can't go beyond the fifteenth.
Would we be wise to go ahead and waive some days?
What we looked at when we had our meeting, um, I guess the last time it snowed really bad and we were not in school, we looked at several different options and thought this was pretty good. Like if we could know that we had a, a calendar that we could waive up to four days, and that would give us a little bit of leadway. But use those first two days first, which would extend to June the fifteenth. And then if it does snow, remember, we used to have the ruling, if it snowed Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, then we could have a Saturday school from eight until one. Now, that's not the best scenario that you can possibly have, but at least you get some hours of instruction in. And then, uh, then after that, start waiving up to four days.
I will say this too, on, um... We, there were two half-days scheduled, one on March thirtieth and one on April the sixth. And we went ahead and made those full days to get those hours back in as well. So we took those before we, um...
But we're not short on hours. In fact, we exceed, every, every year, we exceed by, you know, thirty, forty, fifty hours. What we were concerned about was actually missing seat time. When you, you know, even if you waive four days at the high school, that's four ninety-minute classes that I'm going to be missing.
We've only missed thirteen and a half days of instruction, hours, sorry, thirteen and a half hours of instruction. Because we've made everything up, or we will make it up in June.
I, I just like that. I, I like that plan, and we, we met a couple of times and talked. We don't want to give up instructional time unless it's necessary. And I think we, unless it was just really bad, we wouldn't want to give up more than four or five days. And I wouldn't want to waive those, um, unless we needed to. And I'm, I was going to say, turn my mic on, but Dr. Garrett said it. We have lots of people ask us about the hours. We really don't need hours. We have plenty. Uh, people who add hours are folks who, uh, they add hours because they need them, and, and we don't.
And see, the general statute says one thousand twenty-five hours or a hundred and eighty-five days. Well, we've not gone the hundred and eighty-five days. We've always gone with the thousand twenty-five, and we always exceeded by, by lots of hours. Which really, I think, when Todd and Ginny calculated, you could, you could waive up to ten days, but, but would that be what's best for, for students and teachers?
Do we need to take action, or do we just need to just agree that that's the way we're going to go, or...
I think...
You need to agree and then put it on the agenda for approval.
To take action that this, because this, the weather plan right now is this. And you can see that waiving days does not on the weather plan. Saturday school may, is on there, but it just says Saturday school may become an option when all other days are exhausted. And we probably need to be more specific about if it's a Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, we'll have a Saturday school. If it's Thursday or Friday, we can waive that day. But I do want to say that if, if you do waive that day, those four days, remember that that, two groups of employees that are not going to get paid for those days.
Well, I'm going to ask to add it to the agenda when we get to agenda adjustments.
Okay. And just...
I'll be all right with everybody.
Can we...
We'll do with them.
Can we waive days even without touching spring break?
Yes, that's what we're asking, that's what we're asking to do.
Okay.
We're asking spring break...
Because I know if we touch spring break, they'll run us out of this camp.
Well, Mr. Hitzler, my telephone's ringing out.
This is kind of the, this is kind of the, the order. So the first, the next day would be a no day, and we'll extend it to June fifteenth. Then if we miss another day, it'll be Memorial Day. Then if, after that, we'll start doing Saturday school.
When we can.
When we can. Or waive the Thursday or Friday, because you can't have Saturday school if you miss on a Thursday or Friday. And then waive up to a total of four days. And that, remember, that's just to keep us at getting out at June fifteenth. That's just to keep us where we are now. Once we're done with the weather, we can look at the calendar again if you want to. And then hopefully, we don't miss more than six more days and have to go into spring break. Because at that, that point, we wouldn't have an option.
Yeah, you'd have to.
Let me ask you a question in anticipation of receiving the same question myself. That's another way of saying playing devil's advocate, I guess. Isn't this really the antithesis of what we just done on the future calendar?
It is.
Exactly.
I mean, it's the opposite argument.
We're just right in the middle of the weather right now, that's why.
You know, on the other calendar, we said, we're going to waive four days first before we, before we start tinkering with the schedule, right?
Mm-huh.
But I, I think with this, if you go by the calendar itself, I mean, you would miss, I mean, all we're doing is strictly going by the calendar, what the recommendations were. And you're just adding this in as an extra at the end in case we get there. Which is a real possibility.
Yeah, I think another difference is too, is when, next year, if we waive those four days up front, then we will have nine days after those four to make up, if you look at next year's calendar. Some of those are built into the calendar, and some of our workdays end. The problem that we have now is if we waive four that we've already missed, we still don't ha, we don't, we only have two left. And then we go into spring break, uh, or we have to waive more than four. So if we waive them now, the ones we've already missed and say, you know, they're, they're waived for people, um...
Then we're the gain, Ethan.
Then if we miss another four days...
If we miss five or six days, we're in trouble. I, I think the only other thing you could do, and we did not talk about this, so probably shouldn't bring it up, but, you know, you could waive a day or two before the fifteenth or Memorial Day, but...
It all comes out.
They're, they're sitting there to be used, and we knew going in that we might have to use them. I, I, I like the plan. It may not be perfect, but...
I like everything with the Saturday school stuff.
Well, your, your attendance is not good on Saturday. It ranges seventy-four to seventy-six percent. And, you know, you're, you're getting your, some contact hours in, but isn't, isn't the best method? No.
Well, it's, it's sort of like we talked about before, you know, you, you don't want to do Saturday school. But just as soon as you say, we're not going to do Saturday school, we'll end up having to look at it.
Well, and at this point, our choices are Saturday school or spring break, so...
But now, I've gotten a lot of calls that last several weeks, you know, asking that we do Saturday schools. But it's hard to plan those Saturdays because you have dance, you have church groups, you have all kinds of activities, and that's why your attendance is so low.
Plus, you have to miss one that week, right?
Yeah.
You can't go six days.
No, I think it's important too to remember that if we do a Saturday school, it's of that same week. So if you miss a Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, you're going to make it up on that same week. You're not going to make it up in June on a Saturday. You're going to make it up of that same week.
What was the issue with the, if you extended the school day by thirty minutes, and there's something about people would be working overtime after a certain period or something like that? I don't remember if that was... Yeah, they would get, then we would get into overtime pay, and that would be...
We have the hours.
Yeah, the hours are there, so... I'm trying to figure out if we get another day out of doing it like that, but...
I think if we added, uh, Todd and I did look at this, and, and I think we all agree that probably adding ten minutes to the beginning and ten at the end is not the most instructionally...
Right.
...sound. But you would have to go, if you added twenty minutes to each day, you would have to go nineteen days to make one day.
Okay, that's, that's where I was getting at. I couldn't remember what that formula was or the timeline. Thank you.
And just to be redundant, plus, we don't need that time. I mean, we're way past the thousand twenty-five. We're, we're just, you know, we're trying to get days in, um...
Not hours, yeah.
You know, without waiving more than four. And if there's a blizzard, then we'll just have to talk and pray and come up with whatever we can come up with.
Our two scamming.
Well, it almost makes you wonder if you move five to one and leave everything the way they are. See what I'm saying? Waive the next four. That leaves you.
Getting out on June fourteenth, and you still have Memorial Day.
Well, did you just, did you say move five to one? Well, uh, because I was actually thinking about moving five to, at least move five to three. I mean, I, I think you're five. I think we need to start thinking about, I know the instructional's and everything else, but we need to really start thinking about your four days, waiving your four days needs to be one of your closer options besides taking more days away. But, I mean, that's my personal opinion. I mean, yeah, I, I have a vote, so, I mean, well, if you want to keep it like that, that's fine. But, uh, Saturday school, put it in front, Saturday... fine, but Saturday school, put it in front, Saturday school anyway, Saturday schools is not worth a hoot. I mean, period. You're not getting, you're not gaining anything except days. Besides that, your instructional days, they're not doing nothing. So, I mean, you're sort of just doing nothing there. Yes, I would like to see five moved up somewheres else besides number five.
I'd agree with that, move it to three before Saturday school.
With the caveat of, we figured out how to take care of employees that are going to miss time for the next school year.
That, yeah.
We could do the same, we could go ahead and implement a little early. I know it affects the budget and so on, but I think y'all came up with a really good plan. There's no reason not to implement it if needed. Hopefully, it's going to turn to spring in a week or so and we're going to be all right.
Instead of moving five all the way up to three, you could move, just move three down below five. Just move everything else up or... If y'all want to waive the four days tonight...
I'd move the next, I'd let the next four be waived, is what I'd do. But that's, I'll vote out.
I want to make sure...
I can handle it anyway.
What they just said is they would like to put five at three and just swap places with three and five.
Okay.
So you're going to waive the next four days that we missed?
But now, listen, before we do that, that's something y'all need to discuss and decide if that's what you want to do or not.
Well, I think the biggest issue is the money.
If it's not a workable plan, you got to tell us.
The money of the employees.
They've already told you what they want. They've already told you they want one.
They told us that would work, but I need to know if what we're suggesting is workable.
They want one through seven.
You know, we could waive, we could waive 15, but if it's not workable, then we can't do it.
Well, I think we placed it in priority order, what we felt was important.
Yeah, I think they've already, they've already told you what they're wanting, one through seven.
I just want to point one thing out so that we're all on the same page. If we were to do this, once we do away with the no day on the 15th, if we move those waiving of days up in the calendar, that works as long as we just miss one day in a week. But let's say that we have snow on Monday and on Tuesday and Wednesday. We're not going to have any choice at that point after we call a Saturday school, let's say on Monday. The only thing we're going to have left to do for Tuesday and Wednesday is to waive days. Even if we don't have any days to waive, there's nothing else you're going to be, you're not going to have any other options. But, or take spring break because you've already extended yourself at that point to the 15th, which is the farthest point we can go in the school year. And so at that point, there's nothing else left to do but to waive those days or to take spring break, once you've taken everything else off the table. So just keep that, just keep that in your mind. There's no margin at that point to play with, with any other kind of days.
Well, now, you can keep on talking about four days. Now, let me, let me get it in my head. 125 hours is all we have to do. How the law is, it's 185 days.
Thousand, twenty-five.
Or 1,000, what did I say, 125? Sorry.
I won't test.
1,025.
That's the minimum.
That's the minimum. We could still reach the hours because we've got plenty. So we can sit here and talk about spring break all you want to. If it comes down to it, I am going to waive 10 days before I, I'm sort of like Mr. Larry Henson over here. I'm going to waive 10 days and get down to 1,025 hours before I touch spring break. And then we will work it out.
How to pack.
We will work it out when we cross that bridge.
The other problem is, is you're putting a lot of stress on your curriculum too, in my mind.
Yes, you are.
You start knocking days out and that's instructional time. And you've locked in in the state right now and you're going to just put more and more pressure on that time that you have in the classroom.
Might not stay in the top 10%.
I mean, it's easy to say we're going to throw days away, but it's, that's instructional time that hopefully is quality time.
Well, and again, let me state, that's the antithesis, antithesis of what we just done for next year.
Correct.
We argued that too.
I know.
I'd leave it as you presented it to be my...
Well, the one thing you can do is leave it like it was, and then when we hit, when we take away Memorial Day, we can reconvene.
But what if we're in a snowstorm and we're having to miss the next day?
We can reconvene. We can still reconvene. You can call anybody on this board and we'll be in here, I believe. You can, we can call in, okay.
It's hard to do it one, now that we're right in the middle of it. That's the, that's the issue. Next year, we won't be in...
It's hard to predict what's going to happen.
Exactly. We're just trying to get us through the next few months.
We're just trying to have...
The weatherman can't even predict it.
And I think this order, and again, we had two long discussions about five or six of us, payroll, HR, making sure we weren't cutting people's contract time, transportation, Dr. Garrett, Jenny, myself. I think we put it in this order because we only have two days to play with. And if we waive the four first, then, and we have five or six days of snow, then we may have to waive more than four, but we don't want to for instructional purposes. We have those minimum hours, but we want more than minimum instructurally if we can get them. So, I mean, that's the rationale for why we did it.
That's why you have a blue ribbon school, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
So here's the original recommendation again. And we know from previous surveys that Saturday school and spring break are the least favorite, which is why we took Saturday out of the option for the last few years and we haven't needed it because we only missed five days last year. And one, we only had one two-hour delay. But this year, we're in a different boat with 10 days.
But Saturday does save you a day.
It does.
Even though we don't like Saturday, it's still an instructional day, even if you only get 74% of the kids there.
And for the record, many of us have been praying for no more snow.
Yes.
Just for the record. Sincere prayer.
As Todd said this morning, "I like rain."
Well, and I know you have done, I mean, you've done your homework. I mean, just like I said, I mean, it's just a personal opinion of mine. But I mean, I know you all have done your homework. And sometimes, everybody looks at things different. And that's the reason we're the way we are, but, I mean...
At this point, I suggest we present that counter as...
This plan right here?
Yeah, and then we'll vote on it. And if we vote against it, then we'll have an alternate Plan B. We'll do what Mr. Rogers was talking about, and we'll vote on it. It'll be a decision by...
And we can, you know, review, we can review it anytime you want.
Sure.
But...
Well, it's kind of like Stephen said, if we get Memorial Day and the 15th in there, then we may have to reconvene and look at it.
After 48 hours of notice.
Yeah. We could do a Saturday meet. Make them get a school on.
Well, thank you. I mean, like I said, I want to say thank yous for at least doing it because I know it does a lot of time. Trust me, I was on the calendar committee and I'm glad somebody else is on it now, but...
And next year, with next year's calendar, if we have this same issue, so at this point, if we were in next year's calendar right now, we would only have started making up our second day.
So we wouldn't be talking to...
The end of the school year would only have moved two days. We would still be good.
Of course, that's a lot of instructional time. Okay.
There's no easy answer, especially when you're right in the middle of the weather. So I'll present this...
This way and then we'll vote on it.
Okay.
Then we'll make a decision. Yeah, I'm not telling us what to do, but that's my suggestion.
Sounds good to me.
If we don't like it, we can vote it down and come at it again. Now, I guess we're done with the work session, so now I guess we'll go into our building and grounds and finance committee.